Senator will come to order. All of those not having privileges at the floor will please vacate your chamber. Those in the gallery and those on the floor will please rise as we're led in prayer by the Senator from Mason. Please remain standing after the prayers as the Senator from Brooke leads us in reciting the pledge. Senator?
Thank you, Mr. President. Please join me, bow our heads in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today first to thank you for your blessing of allowing us to come together safely. As we join together today and in the days to come to make decisions for the people of this state, Lord, I pray that you will fill our hearts and mouths with thoughts and words that show our thankfulness and praise to you for the countless blessings we have all been given. The Bible says that whatever we do, whether in the word or deed, we should do it all in the name of the Lord Jesus. Lead us in the way that we should go, that we may be able to bring glory to your holy name as we make the decisions placed before us. And let us be filled with love and power so that we may make bold decisions. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Senator from Brooke.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will the members and the guests in the gallery please join us in reciting the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
The clerk will now call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Senator Azinger. Senator Baldwin. Senator Beach. Senator Beach. Senator Bowley. Senator Brown. Senator Caputo. Senator Clements. Senator Geffert. Senator Grady. Senator Hamilton. Senator Jeffries. Senator Carnes. Senator Lindsey. Senator Maroney. Senator Maroney. Senator Martin. Senator Maynard. Senator Nelson. Senator Phillips. Senator Plimal. Senator Plimal. Senator Roberts. Senator Romano. Senator Romano. Senator Rucker. Senator Rucker. Senator Smith. Senator Stallings. Senator Stover. Senator Swope. Senator Saipolt. Senator Takubo. Senator Takubo. Senator Tarr. Senator Trump. Senator Weld. Senator Wolfel. Senator Woodrum. Senator Blair, Mr. President.
Thirty members having answered to their names, I declare quorum present. The clerk has a communication.
I have a letter dated December 22nd, 2021, addressed to the Honorable Craig P. Blair, President of the Senate, and the Clerk of the Senate, Lee Cassis. Dear President Blair and Mr. Cassis, please accept this letter as official notification of my intent to preside my position as Sergeant-at-Arms of the West Virginia Senate, effective immediately. My decision is based upon personal considerations and is not intended to reflect adversely upon the West Virginia Senate. I have enjoyed my tenure with the West Virginia Senate and the opportunity to work with such an outstanding group of people. I sincerely wish everyone at the Senate well in the future. Sincerely, Joseph A. Friedman.
Communication will be received. The Office of Sergeant-at-Arms is declared vacant. The floor is now open for nominations for the Sergeant-at-Arms. Senator from Pleasant.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's an honor to be asked to nominate a good friend of mine, Mr. David Lavender, as a new Sergeant-at-Arms. He's been a friend to all of you. I know he's been a friend of mine. He was here to help me in any way he could in 2019 when I needed some help in getting in and out. And he and your head doorkeeper were there every time that I needed them. And I know I've seen him in the hallways, helping all of you, running little errands. So I can't think of anyone that I'd be more proud to nominate than David. Thank you.
Is there a second for the nomination? Senator from Boone.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's an honor for me to second the nomination of Dave Lavender for the Sergeant-at-Arms position. He's a lifelong West Virginian, Upper Canoe Valley, graduated from East Bank, West Virginia Tech, worked for DuPont in industrial transport. He's the proud father of Chad, a nationally-recognized orthopedist, proud grandfather of two, and a proud husband of Patty. We've had five years of experience with Dave Lavender, and I think that five years speaks for itself. So it's with enthusiasm that I second this nomination.
Are there further nominations? There being no further nominations, Senator from Greenbrier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that nominations for Sergeant-at-Arms be closed and that you, as President, be authorized to cast the lone unanimous vote of the Senate for Mr. Dave Lavender.
Question before the Senate, the Senate, is the adoption of the motion by the Senator from Greenbrier. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, I declare the motion adopted. The clerk will roll a call.
Mr. President.
I vote aye. Mr. Lavender, having received all the votes cast and has been unanimously elected as the The clerk will administer the oath of office to the Sergeant-at-Arms-elect.
Have him in the middle. Are you ready? Raise your right hand. State your name and repeat after me.
David Lavender.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And faithfully discharge the duties of Sergeant-at-Arms of the West Virginia Senate.
And faithfully discharge the duties of Sergeant-at-Arms of the State of West Virginia.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
The clerk has a proclamation from the Executive.
I, Jim Justice, by virtue of the authority vested in the governor by Section 7, Article 7 of the Constitution of West Virginia, do hereby call the West Virginia Legislature to convene an extraordinary session at 11:00 a.m. on Monday, January 10th, 2022, in its chambers in the state capital, the city of Charleston, for the limited purpose of considering and acting upon only the following matters. First, legislation relating to and implementing a bill to provide certain tax incentives based upon certain investment and employment thresholds to promote development and expansion of new labor and capital-intensive heavy industry in this state. Second, to make supplementary appropriation out of the treasury from the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, to the Executive Governor's Office, Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund, Fund 8823, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0100, to allow for the reimbursement of eligible expenses for the first half of the current fiscal year by certain spending units by supplementing and amending the appropriations for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Third, to supplement and amend the appropriations of public monies out of the treasury in the state fund general revenue by decreasing items of appropriation to the Department of Health and Human Resources, Division of Health, Central Office, Fund 0407, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0506, to the Department of Health and Human Resources Consolidated Medical Services Fund, Fund 0525, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0506, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, West Virginia Parole Board, Fund 0440, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, Central Office, Fund 0446, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, Correctional Units, Fund 0450, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, Bureau of Juvenile Services, Fund 0570, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, and to the Department of Homeland Security, West Virginia State Police, Fund 0453, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0612, all of which spending units have eligible expenses for the first half of the current fiscal year that may be paid from other sources and by increasing as a result of items of appropriation of general revenue funds to the Department of Economic Development, Department of Economic Development, Office of the Secretary, Fund 0256, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0307, for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Fourth, to supplement and amend the appropriations of public monies out of the treasury in the state fund general revenue by decreasing items of appropriation to the Department of Health and Human Resources, Division of Health, Central Office, Fund 0407, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0506, to the Department of Health and Human Resources Consolidated Medical Services Fund, Fund 0525, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0506, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, West Virginia Parole Board, Fund 0440, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections Rehabilitation, Central Office, Fund 0446, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, Correctional Units, Fund 0450, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, Bureau of Juvenile Services, Fund 0570, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, and to the Department of Homeland Security, West Virginia State Police, Fund 0453, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0612, all of which spending units will have eligible expenses for the second half of the current fiscal year that may be paid from other sources and by increasing as a result of items of appropriation of general revenue funds to the Department of Economic Development, Department of Economic Development, Office of the Secretary, Fund 0256, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0307, for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Fifth, to expire funds to the unappropriated surplus balance to the state fund general revenue for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, from the balance of monies remaining as an unappropriated balance in federal funds to the Executive Governor's Office, Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund, Fund 8823, Organization 0100, and making a supplementary appropriation of public monies out of the treasury from the unappropriated surplus balance in the state fund general revenue for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, to the Department of Health and Human Resources, Division of Health, Central Office, Fund 0407, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0506, to the Department of Health and Human Resources Consolidated Medical Services Fund, Fund 0525, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0506, and to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, West Virginia Parole Board, Fund 0440, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, Central Office, Fund 0446, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, Correctional Units, Fund 0450, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, Bureau of Juvenile Services, Fund 0570, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, and to the Department of Homeland Security, West Virginia State Police, Fund 0453, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0612, to allow for the funding of eligible expenses for the second half of the current fiscal year by certain spending units. Sixth, to supplement and amend the appropriations of public monies out of the treasury from the balance of monies remaining as an unappropriated balance in the state fund general revenue to the Department of Economic Development, Department of Economic Development, Office of the Secretary, Fund 0256, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0307, by supplementing and amending the appropriations for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Seventh, to authorize and appropriate public funds sufficient to pay for this extraordinary session and witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and caused the great seal of the State of West Virginia to be affixed done at the Capitol in the city of Charleston, State of West Virginia, this eighth day of January in the year of our Lord, 2022, and in the 159th year of the state, signed, Jim Justice, Governor, attested to by Mac Warner, Secretary of State.
Proclamation be received. Senator from Brooke.
Mr. President, I request unanimous consent to introduce a resolution from the floor.
Is there objection? Chair hears none. Clerk will report the resolution.
Senate Resolution 101 by Senator Weld, raising a committee to inform the House of Delegates that the Senate has assembled an extraordinary session.
Senator from Brooke.
President, I request unanimous consent that the resolution be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the resolution be placed upon its adoption.
Is there objection? Chair hears none. The clerk will read the resolution.
Senate Resolution 101, raising a committee to inform the House of Delegates that the Senate has assembled an extraordinary session.
Question is on adoption of the resolution. All those in favor will say aye. All those opposed will say no. Excuse me. Let's start over again. All those in favor will say aye. All those opposed no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, I declare the resolution adopted. The chair would appoint the Senator from Wood, the Senator from Lewis, and the Senator from Marion to notify the House of Delegates that the Senate has assembled. Senator from Brooke.
Thank you, Mr. President. Request unanimous consent to introduce a resolution from the floor.
Is there objection? Chair hears none. Clerk will report the resolution.
Senate Resolution 102 by Senator Weld, raising a committee to wait upon the governor.
Senator from Brooke.
Thank you, Mr. President. Request unanimous consent that the resolution be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the resolution be placed upon its adoption.
Is there objection? Chair hears none. Clerk will read the resolution.
Senate Resolution 102, raising a committee to wait upon the governor.
Question is on adoption of the resolution. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, I declare the resolution adopted. The chair would appoint the Senator from Preston, the Senator from Mercer, and the senior senator from the Eighth to notify the governor that the legislature has assembled. Introduction of guests. Communications from the House.
There are none.
Communications from the Executive.
There are none.
Reports from standing committees.
There are none.
Reports from select committees.
There are none.
Recognize the delegation from the House.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would settle to the presidency under the parolation of Congress.
Senator will come back to order. Senator from Preston.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are pleased to inform you that your committee to notify the governor has completed its duties and is ready to be discharged.
Report be received. Senator from Wood.
We are pleased to do what that senator just said in the House. Because I don't have a script here. I don't know, Mr. President, but we fulfilled our duty.
Report be received. Introduction of bills.
Senate Bill 1001 by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the Executive, West Virginia Industrial Advancement Act.
Senator from Brooke.
President, I request unanimous consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill be read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair hears none. Clerk will read bill first time.
Senate Bill 1001, West Virginia Industrial Advancement Act, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced. Senator from Brooke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the constitutional rule requiring a bill to be read on three different days be suspended and that the bill be read a second time and a third time be put upon its passage.
Senator from Brooke moves that constitutional rule requiring the bill to be read on three different days be suspended and that the bill be read a second and third time, put upon its passage. All those in favor will vote yea. Those opposed will vote nay. Has every member voted? Has every member voted? Has every member voted? If so, the clerk will close the machine and ascertain the results. On this question, thirty yays, one nay, three absent and not voting, more than four-fifths of the members present, and having voted in affirmative, I declare the constitutional rules suspended. The clerk will read the bill a second time.
Senate Bill 1001, West Virginia Industrial Advancement Act, second reading of the bill.
Are there amendments to the bill?
No, sir.
The bill will be engrossed and advanced. The bill will be engrossed and advanced to third reading. The clerk will read the bill a third time.
Engrossed Senate Bill 1001, West Virginia Industrial Advancement Act, third reading of the bill.
Question is on passage of the bill. Senior Senator from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill creates the West Virginia Industrial Advancement Act. The purpose of the act is to attract law, new labor, and capital-intensive, heavy industrial facilities to the state. The bill defines key terms. Most important among these are definitions for an eligible taxpayer who is an industrial taxpayer who purchases property for the purpose of industrial expansion or revitalization in this state. There's also a definition for a qualified labor-intensive, heavy industrial manufacturing project. This is an individual project which has a $2 billion purchase of property for manufacturing which is placed into industrial service in this state. The project must also hire 500 full-time employees within 36 months of purchase of the manufacturing property. The bill creates a project tax credit equal to 50% of the qualified manufacturer's investment which may be used as a credit against the personal income tax and the corporation net income tax for an eligible taxpayer. The bill sets a formula to determine the qualified manufacturing investment based upon the applicable percentage of the cost considering the useful life of the project and the project being placed in service in this state. The bill also has provisions for forfeiture of the tax credit for cessation of use as an industrial facility in this state or disposal prior to the end of the useful life of the project. A simple change in form or in the manner in which the business is conducted or the transfer or sale to a successor of the property, if the property remains a manufacturing facility, does not invalidate the credit. There are extensive record-keeping requirements to accurately identify the property purchased for manufacturing investment purposes. The bill sets out consequences for failure to keep the appropriate records. A second tax incentive is an exemption from consumer sales, service, and use tax for certain businesses, supplies, and construction services. This is not a new exemption. Currently, West Virginia has a manufacturing sales exemption. This will offer clarity to ensure that exemption extends to all aspects of these types of projects. This exemption extends to municipal consumer sales and use taxes. There are some exclusions to this exemption such as gasoline or special fuel use for motor vehicles or machinery and the purchases of automobiles. Additionally, municipalities may not impose business and occupation taxes, excise taxes, sales or use taxes, license taxes or fees, amusement taxes, public utility taxes, consumption tax, franchise tax, or other municipal taxes or fees. The Tax Commissioner is given rule-making authority, and the bill has a provision making provisions of a new article subject to the Tax Procedure and Administration Act and West Virginia Tax Crimes and Penalties Act. The provisions of the new article are effective retroactively to January 1, 2022. Mr. President, I urge passage of the bill.
Question is on passage of the bill. It's their discussion. Senator from Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I've stood here many times and encouraged economic development in our state, and I certainly cheer this one on with all my support. I do rise on a note of caution, and I'm somewhat limited in what I can say because of the conditions that we've been placed under regarding the memorandum of understanding covering this particular project, and I certainly do not want to violate that. Again, I think any time we put West Virginians to work, it's a good thing. I would just recommend caution to those that are handling this matter from our Economic Development Office and those of you that are involved in the actual negotiations, just with a few thoughts. I don't know where else to vent these thoughts, or I would do it in that location. Didn't seem to have an opportunity earlier prior to this date. MOUs are definitely, are generally not enforceable. Perhaps there's something that, that, that there's, that's in place here that I'm unaware of that makes it a legal binding document, but generally they're not. We need to be careful about who's on the hook for any provisions that allow us to get our tax money back should this not go through. Some of the provisions cause me concern because of assignments of obligations and liabilities. That, I've seen that happen too many times in our economic development efforts. Finally, there's some definitional issues as an attorney under contract if we're going to try to enforce a contract at some point down the road that will work against us, enabling us to enforce those provisions because of the language used. I bring these up only because I want us to be cautious. We're talking about a lot of money and a lot of taxpayer money, a lot of money given to us by Congress or money that came to us from Congress and will enable us to do this, and God bless us. We need this. There's no doubt in my mind. There's no doubt in my mind that this is going to benefit West Virginians for generations. And I don't care where there's economic development in West Virginia. If it benefits West Virginians, it's worth doing. It's worth taking the risk. You know, we've done a lot of it up in my area with, with a lot of money, less than this, but a lot of money. It's been worthwhile. It's proven to be effective. It's proven to be worthwhile. I hope this is too, Mr. President. Just want to make sure that we're covering our bases, using our heads, and working together to make sure we get the best deal possible and the deal that we believe we're going to be getting. I fully support, Mr. President, fully support you in this matter, and all of the Senate and the House, I'm sure, will support this measure. It's a good thing for West Virginia. Just wanted to bring these issues to the attention of this body. Thank you.
Further discussion. Senator from Cavill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo the comments of my friend from Harrison County because he's exactly right. The devil can be, usually is, in the details. So his words of advice to those that are going to consummate this particular deal must be heeded. I've done some diligence on the project myself. Certainly, if it comes to pass, it will be of great benefit to Cavill and Wayne Counties, not to mention Maine and Jacks, Wayne, excuse me, Mason and Jackson and et cetera. But I'm confident that the callback provisions are, are going to be righteous, they're going to be sufficient, and I'm confident that overall, this is a tremendous economic opportunity for Western West Virginia, and I'm very happy to be in support of it.
Further discussion. Senator from Ohio.
Yes. It's a matter, I'm for economic development, but it's a matter of principle here that when you, they say haste makes waste. I cannot see why it's being rushed through without actually looking at it. I read this bill, and it's quite complicated. There's a lot of tax deductions here and there, and a lot of money will be leaving our state. $315 million just to give away just that quickly? I just feel as though it should go through all the proper committees and things instead of just being rushed through, and that's my objection. Again, I am for economic development, but I am also for procedural, and it's just a matter of principle.
Further discussion. Senator from Marion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very excited about this project as well. I think it will be overall one of the best things that ever hit West Virginia if it comes to fruition. You know, we've been here a long time as president. We've seen a lot of these deals come, and they never turn out to be what the promises were, but I do feel good about this one, and I think that we have to, we have to take a shot here and try to bring those jobs to West Virginia, those good-paying jobs in West Virginia. But, Mr. President, I'd be remiss if I don't go on the record saying, I want to urge this company, when they come to build this facility in West Virginia, to use West Virginia workers. We have the best skilled craftsmen and women in the country right here in West Virginia. We have a lot of good West Virginia companies. West Virginia companies, Mr. President, who's been around for a long time, and I think we should encourage and do everything we can to make sure those West Virginia companies are employed on that site, building that facility, and then, once it's built, hopefully, hopefully, will put a lot of West Virginia citizens to work, which is a win-win for everybody. Thank you, Mr. President.
Further discussion. If not, question before the Senate is, shall the bill pass? All those in favor will vote yea. Those opposed will vote nay. The clerk shall prepare the machine. Has every member voted? Has every member voted? Has every member voted? If so, the clerk will close the machine and ascertain the results. On this question, thirty yays, one nay, three absent and not voting, more than a majority of those present voting, having voted in affirmative, I declare the bill passed. Senator from Brooke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill be made effective from passage and request unanimous consent that the roll call used on passage of the bill be used to make it so effective.
Senator from Brooke moves that the bill be made effective from passage and request unanimous consent that the roll call used on the passage of the bill be used to make it so effective. Is there objection? Chair hears none. On this question, thirty yays, one nay, three absent and not voting, more than two-thirds of those elected to the Senate, having voted in affirmative, I declare the bill effective from passage. The clerk will communicate the actions of the Senate to the House.
Senate Bill 1002 by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the Executive, making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Governor's Office Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund.
Senator from Brooke.
Mr. President, request unanimous consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill be read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair hears none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill 1002, making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Governor's Office Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced. Senator from Brooke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the constitutional rule requiring a bill be read on three different days be suspended, the bill be read a second and third time, and be put upon its passage.
Senator from Brooke moves that the constitutional rule requiring the bill be read on three different days be suspended and that the bill be read a second and third time and put upon its passage. All those in favor will vote yea. Those opposed will vote nay. The clerk will prepare the. Has every member voted? Has every member voted? If so, the clerk will close the machine and ascertain the results. On this question, thirty-one yays, zero nays, three absent and not voting, more than four-fifths of those members present, having voted in affirmative, I declare the constitutional rule suspended. The clerk will read the bill a second time.
Senate Bill 1002, making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Governor's Office Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund, second reading of the bill.
Are there amendments to the bill?
No, sir.
The bill will be engrossed and advanced to third reading. The clerk will read the bill a third time.
Senate Bill 1002, making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Governor's Office Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund, third reading of the bill.
Question is on passage of the bill. Senior Senator from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senate Bill 1002 is a supplemental appropriation increasing the federal spending authority within the executive by first creating a new item, Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund, and second, increasing the spending authority within this new item as follows: Personal services and employee benefits, $127,500,000; repairs and alterations, $30,000; equipment, $40,000; current expenses, $40 million; buildings, $20,000; other assets, $400, for a total increase in federal spending authority of $167,590,400. Mr. President, I urge passage.
Question is on passage of the bill. It's their discussion. If not, the question before the Senate is, shall the bill pass? All those in favor will vote yea. Those opposed will vote nay. The clerk shall prepare. Has every member voted? Has every member voted? If so, the clerk will close the machine and ascertain the results. On this question, thirty-one yays, zero nays, three absent and not voting, more than a majority of those elected to the Senate, having voted in affirmative, I declare the bill passed. Senator from Brooke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill be made effective from passage and request unanimous consent that the roll call used on the passage of the bill be used to make it so effective.
The Senator from Brooke moves that the bill be made effective from passage and request unanimous consent that the roll call used on the passage of the bill be used to make it so effective. Is there objection? The chair hears none. On this question, thirty-one yays, zero nays, three absent and not voting, more than two-thirds of those elected to the Senate, having voted in affirmative, I declare the bill effective from passage. The clerk will communicate the action of the Senate to the House.
Senate Bill 1003 by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the Executive, decreasing and increasing existing appropriations from state fund general revenue.
Senator from Brooke.
Mr. President, I request unanimous consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill be read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair hears none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill 1003, decreasing and increasing existing appropriations from state fund general revenue, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced. Senator from Brooke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the constitutional rule requiring a bill be read on three different days be suspended, the bill be read a second and third time, and be put upon its passage.
The Senator from Brooke moves that the constitutional rule requiring the bill be read on three different days be suspended and that the bill be read a second and third time, put upon its passage. All those in favor will vote yea. Those opposed will vote nay. The clerk will prepare the machine. Has every member voted? Has every member voted? If so, the clerk will close the machine and ascertain the results. On this question, thirty-one yays, zero nays, three absent and not voting, more than four-fifths of those members present, having voted in affirmative, I declare the constitutional rule suspended, and the clerk will read the bill a second time.
Senate Bill 1003, decreasing and increasing existing appropriations from state fund general revenue, second reading of the bill.
Are there amendments to the bill?
No, sir.
The bill will be engrossed and advanced to third reading. The clerk will read the bill a third time.
Engrossed Senate Bill 1003, decreasing and increasing existing appropriations from state fund general revenue, third reading of the bill.
Question is on passage of the bill. Senior Senator from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senate Bill 1003 is a general revenue supplemental appropriation which first decreases general revenue appropriations within several funds found in the Department of Health and Human Resources and the Department of Homeland Security in the amount of $157,500, excuse me, $157,500,000. Second, this supplemental increases the existing directed transfer appropriation within the Department of Economic Development by $157,500,000. These funds are then directed to be transferred to the Economic Development Promotion and Closing Special Revenue Fund. Mr. President, I urge passage.
Question is on passage of the bill. It's their discussion. If not, the question before the Senate is, shall the bill pass? All those in favor will vote yea. Those opposed will vote nay. The clerk shall prepare the machine. Has every member voted? Has every member voted? If so, the clerk will close the machine and ascertain the results. On this question, thirty-one yays, zero nays, three absent and not voting, more than a majority of those elected to the Senate, having voted in affirmative, I declare the bill passed. Senator from Brooke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill be made effective from passage and request unanimous consent that the roll call used on the passage of the bill be used to make it so effective.
Senator from Brooke moves that the bill be made effective from passage and request unanimous consent that the roll call used on the passage of the bill be used to make it so effective. Is there objection? Chair hears none. On this question, thirty-one yays, zero nays, three absent and not voting, more than two-thirds of those elected to the Senate, having voted in affirmative, I declare the bill effective from passage. The clerk will communicate the actions of the Senate to the House.
Senate Bill 1004 by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the Executive, decreasing items of appropriation from state fund general revenue.
Senator from Brooke.
Mr. President, I request unanimous consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill be read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair hears none. The clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill 1004, decreasing items of appropriation from state fund general revenue, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced. Senator from Brooke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the constitutional rule requiring a bill be read on three different days be suspended, the bill be read a second and third time, and be placed upon its passage.
Senator from Brooke moves that the constitutional rule requiring the bill be read on three different days be suspended and that the bill be read a second and third time, put upon its passage. All those in favor will vote yea. Those opposed will vote nay. The clerk shall prepare the. Has every member voted? Has every member voted? If so, the clerk will close the machine and ascertain the results. On this question, thirty-one yays, zero nays, three absent and not voting, more than four-fifths of the members present, having voted in affirmative, I declare the constitutional rule suspended. The clerk will read the bill a second time.
Senate Bill 1004, decreasing items of appropriation from state fund general revenue, second reading of the bill.
Are there amendments to the bill?
No, sir.
The bill will be engrossed and advanced to third reading. The clerk will read the bill a third time.
Engrossed Senate Bill 1004, decreasing items of appropriation from state fund general revenue, third reading of the bill.
Question is on passage of the bill. Senior Senator from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senate Bill 1004 is a general revenue supplemental appropriation which first decreases general revenue appropriations within several funds found in the Department of Health and Human Resources and Department of Homeland Security in the amount of an additional $157,500,000. Second, this supplemental increases the existing directed transfer appropriation within the Department of Economic Development by an additional $157,500,000. These funds are then directed to be transferred to the Economic Development Promotion and Closing Special Revenue Fund. Mr. President, I urge passage.
Question is on passage of the bill. It's their discussion. If not, the question before the Senate is, shall the bill pass? All those in favor will vote yea. Those opposed will vote nay. The clerk shall prepare the machine. Has every member voted? Has every member voted? If so, the clerk will close the machine and ascertain the results. On this question, thirty-one yays. On this question, thirty-one yays, zero nays, three absent not voting, more than a majority of those elected to the Senate having voted in affirmative, I declare the bill passed. Senator from Brooke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill be made effective from passage and request unanimous consent that the roll call used on the passage of the bill be used to make it so effective.
Senator from Brooke moves that the bill be made effective from passage and request unanimous consent that the roll call used on the passage of the bill be used to make it so effective. Is there objection? Chair here is none. On this question, thirty-one yays, zero nays, three absent not voting, more than two-thirds of those elected to the Senate having voted in affirmative, I declare the bill effective from passage. The clerk will communicate the actions of the Senate to the House.
Senate Bill 1005 by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive expiring funds and supplementing appropriations to various state agencies.
Senator from Brooke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I request unanimous consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill be read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk, read the bill first time.
Senate Bill 1005, expiring funds and supplementing appropriations to various state agencies. First reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced. Senator from Brooke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the constitutional rule requiring a bill be read on three different days be suspended, and that the bill be read a second and third time, and be put upon its adoption.
Senator from Brooke moves the constitutional rule requiring the bill be read on three different days be suspended, and that the bill be read a second and third time, put upon its passage. All those in favor will vote yea, those opposed will vote nay. The clerk will prepare the machine. Has every member voted? Has every member voted? If so, the clerk closes the machine and ascertain the results. On this question, thirty-one yays, zero nays, three absent not voting, more than four-fifths of the members present having voted in affirmative, I declare the constitutional rule suspended. The clerk will read the bill a second time.
Senate Bill 1005, expiring funds and supplementing appropriations to various state agencies. Second reading of the bill.
Are there amendments to the bill?
No, sir.
The bill will be engrossed in advance to third reading. The clerk will read the bill a third time.
Engrossed Senate Bill 1005, expiring funds and supplementing appropriations to various state agencies. Third reading of the bill.
Question is on passage of the bill. Senior Senator from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senate Bill 1005 expires $157,500,000 from the Governor's Office Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund to the unappropriate surplus balance of the state's general revenue balance, and creates a general revenue surplus appropriations within several funds found in the Department of Health and Human Resources and Department of Homeland Security in the amount of $157,500,000. Mr. President, I urge passage.
Question is on passage of the bill. Is there a discussion? If not, the question before the Senate is, shall the bill pass? All those in favor will vote yea, those opposed will vote nay. The clerk shall prepare the machine. Has every member voted? Has every member voted? If so, the clerk closes the machine and ascertain the results. On this question, thirty-one yays, zero nays, three absent not voting, more than a majority of those elected to the Senate having voted in affirmative, I declare the bill passed. Senator from Brooke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill be made effective from passage and request unanimous consent that the roll call used on the passage of the bill be used to make it so effective.
Senator from Brooke moves that the bill be made effective from passage and request unanimous consent that the roll call used on the passage of the bill be used to make it so effective. Is there objection? Chair here is none. On this question, thirty-one yays, zero nays, three absent not voting, more than two-thirds of those elected to the Senate having voted in affirmative, I declare the bill effective from passage. The clerk will communicate the actions of the Senate to the House.
Senate Bill 1006 by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive supplementing and amending appropriations to Department of Economic Development, Office of Secretary.
Senator from Brooke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I request unanimous consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill be read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. The clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill 1006, supplementing and amending appropriations to Department of Economic Development, Office of Secretary. First reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced. Senator from Brooke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the constitutional rule requiring that a bill be read on three different days be suspended, that the bill be read a first, a second, and third time, and be put upon its passage.
Senator from Brooke moves the constitutional rule requiring the bill be read on three different days be suspended, and that the bill be read a second and third time, put upon its passage. All those in favor will vote yea, those opposed will vote nay. The clerk shall prepare the -- Has every member voted? Has every member voted? If so, the clerk closes the machine and ascertain the results. On this question, thirty-one yays, zero nays, three absent not voting, more than four-fifths of the members present having voted in affirmative, I declare the constitutional rule suspended. The clerk will read the bill a second time.
Senate Bill 1006, supplementing and amending appropriations to Department of Economic Development, Office of Secretary. Second reading of the bill.
Are there amendments to the bill?
No, sir.
The bill will be engrossed in advance to third reading. The clerk will read the bill a third time.
Engrossed Senate Bill 1006, supplementing and amending appropriations to Department of Economic Development, Office of Secretary. Third reading of the bill.
Question is on passage of the bill. Senior Senator from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senate Bill 1006 appropriates $15 million from the unappropriated balance of fiscal year 2022 general revenue to the directed transfer appropriation within the Department of Economic Development, Office of the Secretary. These funds are then directed to the Economic Development Promotion and Closing Fund. Mr. President, I urge passage.
Question is on passage of the bill. Is there discussion? If not, the question before the Senate is, shall the bill pass? All those in favor will vote yea, those opposed will vote nay. The clerk shall prepare the -- Has every member voted? Has every member voted? If so, the clerk closes the machine and ascertain the results. On this question, thirty-one yays, zero nays, three absent not voting, more than a majority of those elected to the Senate having voted in affirmative, I declare the bill passed. Senator from Brooke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill be made effective from passage and request unanimous consent that the roll call used upon its passage of the bill be used to make it so effective.
Senator from Brooke moves that the bill be made effective from passage and request unanimous consent that the roll call used on the passage of the bill be used to make it so effective. Is there objection? Chair here is none. On this question, thirty-one yays, zero nays, three absent not voting, more than two-thirds of those elected to the Senate having voted in affirmative, I declare the bill effective from passage. The clerk will communicate the actions of the Senate to the House. Resolutions.
There are none.
Petitions.
There are none.
Unfinished business.
There is none.
Senator will be at ease for one moment. Bills on third reading.
There are none.
Bills on second reading.
There are none.
Bills on first reading.
There are none.
Introduction to the guest. Remarks by members. Miscellaneous business. Senator from Brooke.
Mr. President, I request unanimous consent that a leave of absence be granted to the Senator from Marshall County.
So ordered. Senator from Brooke.
Do announcements. I move the Senate stand adjourned until 9:00 a.m. tomorrow.
Senate will adjourn until 9:00 a.m. tomorrow. All those in favor will vote yea, those opposed will vote nay. Does the Senator have an announcement?
For energy at 5:00 today has been canceled. They was late getting the cancellation out, but there will be no energy meeting today at 5:00. Thank you, Mr. President.
The chair has an announcement. The senior senator from the 15th has been removed from the Committee on the Judiciary. The senator from Lewis has been removed from the Committee on Interstate Cooperation. The senator from Mercer has been removed from the Committee on Pensions. The senator from Preston has been removed from the Committee on Banking and Insurance. The senator from Brooke has been removed from the Committee on Education. The senator from Summers has been removed from the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, and the senator from Randolph has been appointed to the Committees on Banking and Insurance, Education, Interstate Cooperation, the Judiciary, Pensions, and Transportation and Infrastructure. Senator from Brooke.
President, I request unanimous consent that the updated list of standing committee membership be printed in the Journal.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. So ordered. Senator from Brooke, let's close out again for the final announcements to adjourn.
I move the Senate stand adjourned until 9:00 a.m. tomorrow.
Thank you. Question before the Senate is, does the Senate stand adjourned until 9:00 a.m. tomorrow? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. I declare the Senate adjourned.
The House will please be in order. Those persons not having privilege of the floor will please vacate the chamber. Members and guests will please rise as we are led in prayer this morning by the gentleman from the 13th, Doug at Pinson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we sure do love you today, and Lord, it is a privilege to call in the precious and holy name of Jesus Christ. Lord, we ask today for wisdom beyond ourselves, and we pray that you'd give us guidance. I pray you'd give us boldness to do right. Father, I pray that you would direct as we make decisions that affect not just ourselves and our families, but our communities. Father, I pray you would help us to do right, help us to differentiate the importance of doing right even when it might be difficult. Father, I pray you'd protect our state. I pray that you would guide and comfort those who are facing difficult times. And Lord, the legislators that are here today and this side and across the building, Father, I pray that you'd be with our families, our spouses, our children, in some cases, grandchildren, as we're here for the next several weeks. God, give us wisdom, give us protection, give us traveling mercy. Thank you for the privilege, the honor to represent our constituents and our communities. Thank you for the privilege and the honor to represent you. Lord, we ask all this in Jesus Christ's wonderful and precious name. Amen.
If members and guests will remain standing, will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by the gentleman of the 14th, Doug at Wombley.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance --
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members and guests may be seated. The clerk has a letter of resignation.
Dear Mr. Speaker, with this letter and a lot of pride in things accomplished during my tenure, I hereby resign my position as a member of the West Virginia House of Delegates. It has been my honor since my election in 2016 to serve as a delegate to the 13th District. From day one, my goal has been to make West Virginia a place where young adults can find jobs that affords them a chance to stay in West Virginia and raise their families. While there is still more work to be done, I truly believe over the last six years, West Virginia has made great progress toward that goal. Please know my decision was not one made lightly, but with much consideration for both those I represent as well as my personal future. Recent changes in my life have led me to move, led me to a move out of my current delegate district and into Canal County in the very near future. Canal County has always been a special place to me that feels like home and a great place to start a family and raise children. Thank you for the faith you showed in me during your tenure as Speaker, including the appointment as Vice Chairman of House Education. I will always be thankful for the opportunities afforded me during my tenure in the West Virginia House of Delegates. With many blessings, Delegate Joshua Higginbotham.
That letter of resignation will be received and filed with the clerk. The clerk has a letter of appointment.
Dear Secretary Warner, pursuant to West Virginia Code, Chapter 3, Article 10, Section 5, I have this day appointed Kathy Hess Kraus, Buffalo, Putnam County, as a delegate representing the 13th District of the House of Delegates to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of the Honorable Joshua Higginbotham. Sincerely, Jim Justice, Governor. Delegate Hess Kraus took the oath of office on December 2, 2021.
Delegate Hess Kraus, please stand. The House will please make our new colleague feel welcome today. Clerk has another letter of resignation.
Dear Honorable Speaker Hanschall, it has been an honor and privilege of a lifetime to serve the 42nd District of Greenbrier, Summers, and Monroe Counties since being elected as their delegate in November 2020. Serving as a member of the Republican supermajority has been a blessing, and I am excited about the progress our state is making on the economic, social, and judicial fronts that were the hallmarks of my campaign. However, I am now facing health-related issues which will require surgical interventions and a lengthy time of recovery, which will be during the upcoming 2022 legislative session. Thus, effective December 4, 2021, I resign my position as delegate from the 42nd Delegate or 42nd House District of West Virginia to assure my constituents full representation for the up, for the coming legislative session. While I am saddened to leave office, I resign knowing my votes were made prayerfully and with the best interest of West Virginia and her people in mind. I am thankful that I heeded God's call to run for office and serve a state and region that has given so much to me. I will continue to work behind the scenes for a better tomorrow for the Greenbrier Valley, and I will support whomever is appointed as my successor in any way possible. Thank you, Greenbrier, Summers, and Monroe Counties, for allowing me to be your voice in ensuring that mountaineers are always free. God bless, Delegate Barry L. Bruce.
That letter of resignation will be received and filed with the clerk. The clerk has a letter of appointment.
Dear Secretary Warner, pursuant to West Virginia Code, Chapter 3, Article 10, Section 5, I have this day appointed Michael Honaker, Lewisburg, Greenbrier County, as a delegate representing the 42nd District of the House of Delegates to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of the Honorable Barry Bruce. Sincerely, Jim Justice, Governor. Delegate Honaker took the oath of office on January 4, 2022.
That communication will be received and filed with the clerk. Delegate Honaker would please stand this morning. The House will please make our new colleague welcome. Lady from the 49th.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I suggest the absence of a quorum.
The lady from the 49th suggests the absence of a quorum. All members will register your attendance today by voting either yes or no. The clerk will please prepare the machine. Has every member present registered his or her attendance? If so, the clerk will close the machine. On this question, 93 members registered attendance today. The chair declares a quorum to be present. Lady from the 49th.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move the Speaker be authorized to appoint a committee of three to join with a similar committee on the part of the Senate to inform -- let me see, went ahead. To inform the Senate that the House of Delegates has assembled an extraordinary session and is ready to enter upon the business stated in the proclamation by which they have been called together.
The lady from the 49th moves that the Speaker be authorized to appoint a committee of three members to inform the Senate that the House has assembled an extraordinary session and is ready to proceed with the business stated in the call. Those in favor of that motion will please say aye. As opposed, will please say no. The ayes have it, that motion is adopted. On that committee, the chair appoints the lady from the 3rd, Delegate Storch, the gentleman On that committee, the chair appoints the lady from the 3rd, Delegate Storch, the gentleman of the 31st, Delegate Tony, the gentleman of the 34th, Delegate Boggs. Lady from the 49th.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the Speaker be authorized to appoint a committee of three to join with a similar committee on the part of the Senate to inform His Excellency, the Governor, that the legislature has assembled an extraordinary session and is ready to proceed to the business stated in the proclamation.
Lady from the 49th moves that the Speaker be authorized to appoint a committee of three members to join with a similar committee of the Senate to conform His Excellency, the Governor, that the legislature has assembled an extraordinary session and is ready to proceed with the business stated in the call. Those in favor of that motion will please say aye. Those opposed will please say no. The ayes have it, that motion is adopted. On that committee, the chair appoints the gentleman from the 12th District, Delegate Westfall, the gentleman from the 45th District, Delegate Martin, and the gentleman from the 17th District, Delegate Lovejoy. Introduction to guests. Introduction to guests. Reports of standing committees. Reports of select committees. Message from the executive.
Yeah. Executive Department Charleston, a proclamation by the Governor. I, Jim Justice, by virtue of the authority vested in the Governor by Section 7, Article 7 of the Constitution of West Virginia, do hereby call the West Virginia Legislature to convene an extraordinary session at 11:00 a.m. on Monday, January 10, 2022, in its chambers in the state Capitol, the city of Charleston, for the limited purpose of considering and acting upon only the following matters. First, legislation relating to and implementing a bill to provide certain tax incentives based upon certain investment and employment thresholds to promote development and expansion of new labor and capital-intensive heavy industry in this state. Second, to make supplementary appropriation out of the treasury from the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, to the executive Governor's Office Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund, Fund 8823, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0100, to allow for the reimbursement of eligible expenses for the first half of the current fiscal year by certain spending units by supplementing and amending the appropriations for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Third, to supplement and amend the appropriation of public monies out of the treasury and the state fund general revenue by decreasing items of appropriation to the Department of Health and Human Resources, Division of Health Central Office, Fund 0407, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0506, to the Department of Health and Human Resources Consolidated Medical Services Fund, Fund 0525, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0506, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, West Virginia Parole Board, Fund 0440, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, Central Office, Fund 0446, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, Correctional Units, Fund 0450, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, Bureau of Juvenile Services, Fund 0570, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, and to the Department of Homeland Security, West Virginia State Police, Fund 0453, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0612, all of which spending units have eligible expenses for the first half of the current fiscal year that may be paid from other sources. And by increasing, as a result, items of appropriation of general revenue funds to the Department of Economic Development, Department of Economic Development, Office of the Secretary, Fund 0256, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0307, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Fourth, to supplement and amend the appropriation of public monies out of the treasury and the state fund general revenue by decreasing items of appropriation to the Department of Health and Human Resources, Division of Health Central Office, Fund 0407, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0506, to the Department of Health and Human Resources Consolidated Medical Services Fund, Fund 0525, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0506, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, West Virginia Parole Board, Fund 0440, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, Central Office, Fund 0446, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, Correctional Units, Fund 0450, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, Bureau of Juvenile Services, Fund 0570, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, and to the Department of Homeland Security, West Virginia State Police, Fund 0453, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0612, all of which spending units will have eligible expenses for the second half of the current fiscal year that may be paid from other sources. And by increasing, as a result, items of appropriation of general revenue funds to the Department of Economic Development, Department of Economic Development, Office of the Secretary, Fund 0256, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0307, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Fifth, to expire funds to the unappropriate surplus balance in the state fund general revenue for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, from the balance of monies remaining as an unappropriate balance in federal funds to the executive Governor's Office Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund, Fund 8823, Organization 0100, and making a supplementary appropriation of public monies out of the treasury from the unappropriated surplus balance in the state fund general revenue for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, to the Department of Health and Human Resources, Division of Health Central Office, Fund 0407, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0506, to the Department of Health and Human Resources Consolidated Medical Services Fund, Fund 0525, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0506, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, West Virginia Parole Board, Fund 0440, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, Central Office, Fund 0446, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, Correctional Units, Fund 0450, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, to the Department of Homeland Security, Division of Corrections and Rehabilitation, Bureau of Juvenile Services, Fund 0570, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0608, and to the Department of Homeland Security, West Virginia State Police, Fund 0453, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0612, to allow for the funding of eligible expenses for the second half of the current fiscal year by certain spending units. Six, to supplement and amend the appropriation of public monies out of the treasury from the balance of monies remaining as an unappropriate balance in the state fund general revenue to the Department of Economic Development, Department of Economic Development, Office of the Secretary, Fund 0256, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0307, by supplementing and amending the appropriations for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Seven, to authorize and appropriate public funds sufficient to pay for this extraordinary session. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the great seal of the state of West Virginia to be affixed, done at the Capitol, the city of Charles, state of West Virginia, this 8th day of January, in the year of our Lord, 2022, and in the 159th year of the state. Jim Justice, Governor.
That proclamation will be received. Are there further messages from the executive? If not, the chair recognizes our three former colleagues in the rear of the chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're pleased to notify you that the Senate has assembled with a quorum present and is ready to proceed with the business of this session.
Thank you very much. Are there further Senate messages? If not, resolutions, petitions, motions? Bills introduced?
House Bill 101, relating to establishment of the West Virginia Industrial Advancement Act.
Lady from the 49th.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I ask unanimous consent that the further reading of bills introduced be dispensed with and that each bill be considered as formally introduced and referred to the appropriate committees as indicated on the delegate console system.
Lady from the 49th asked unanimous consent that the further reading of bills introduced be dispensed with and that each bill be considered as having been formally introduced and referred to the appropriate committees as shown on the delegate console system. Are there objections? Chair here's no objections. Unfinished business? Bills on third reading? Bills on second reading? Bills on first reading? Lady from the 49th.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Subject to announcements, I move the House stand in recess until 6:00 p.m.
Lady from the 49th moves that subject to announcements, the House stand in recess until 6:00 p.m. Lady from the 49th for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You're invited to attend a presentation, as you see on your desk, given by WVU and the W, West Virginia Department of Education, on the topic of early child education today in GovOrg, and lunches provided.
Gentleman of the 10th, Doug Edens.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Your Committee on Finance will meet today in the House chambers at 2:00 p.m. Thank you.
Gentleman of the 8th, Doug Edens.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. To the members, the House Energy Committee interim today is canceled.
Are there further announcements? If not, question before the House is the motion that the House stand in recess until 6:00 p.m. Those in favor of the motion will please say aye. Those opposed will please say no. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. The House is in recess until 6:00 o'clock.